Good evening. For any of you who don't know this, this is Patriots Day in the state of North Dakota. It's the first Texas state holiday that has happened in a long time. We're the fifth state in the nation to have Patriots Day. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Gary.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Preston.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. Fargo-Cast Public Health. Last month, the YMCA Women of the Year nominees were announced, and Fargo-Cast Public Health Director Desi Fleming was among them. Thank you, Officer. Desi's passion for and commitment to public health are evident and longstanding, and we are so proud that she will be recognized along with other nominees later this month. The ComStat Department and Fargo-Cast Public Health were recently recognized with the American Advertising Federal Award for the collective work in producing Vax Up ND campaigns, which are statewide over the last few months. This is our first addie. It's tremendous honor for our team. Also, the ComGA team was notified last week that the Vax Up North Dakota Campaign has also been placed on a national shortlist for People's Choice Award for Local Heroes ad it produced earlier this year. The winner is chosen based on online votes. To vote for us, please visit bit.ly/telly2022. Bit.ly/telly2022. You want to get your phones out and start doing that right away so we win. John, you must have a way we can make that work, huh?
Nope.
Fargo Public Library. There are several interesting programs and events for residents all ages happening at the library in the next couple of weeks, including: The Fargo Public Library is hosting the Houseplant Swap set for Monday, April 25th from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the downtown main library. Participants are asked to bring in houseplants to trade or share, which could be divided into houseplants, small starter plants, or propagated slips. If you don't have anything to bring, that's okay. Everybody will go home with something new. Also during April, the library is holding a library card design contest for all ages, including adults. Entry forms and design templates, rules and guidelines are available on any of the Fargo Public Library locations and can also be downloaded from the library's website. Winning designs will become limited edition Fargo Public Library cards. Solid Waste. This is Earth Week. Early today, I joined everybody at North Dakota Recycling Plant with fellow mayors and commissioners to introduce this week and the many activities to commemorate it. This includes the City of Fargo Poster Contest, Bat Bus Get Your Can on the Bus Promotion, and Red River Zoo's Party for the Planet. It's time to go green, and this week is a great opportunity to do that. Strategic Planning and Research. The apartment vacancy rate in December declined to 3.8% in Fargo. This is down from 5.8% in December of 2020, 9% in December of 2019, and 10% in December of 2018. There were 833 apartment units under construction in Fargo in December, but only one apartment building has been permitted in Fargo since December 1st. Tonight, Chief Zabowski and Assistant Chief Savanowitz are here to introduce a video introducing the creation of a comprehensive and overarching officer wellness program at the Fargo PD. The chief and assistant chief will also be introducing us to Jordan Cortee, who is a newly promoted investigator on our Metro Streets Crime Unit. In a recent conference hosted by the International Association Chiefs of Police, investigator Cortee placed first in the Physical Fitness Challenge, which is a testimony to the people we have FPD. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. A lead up to the video? Okay. I just wanted to meet in person Jordan, who kind of put us on the map with IACP and our physical fitness, and really provide this as an update to the commission on the progress being made on one of our very important, not only core values, but projects in the department officer wellness. This program, under the leadership of Assistant Chief Stefanowitz, will be very comprehensive, not just physical, mental health, financial, diet, sleep, all of the things that we really need to make sure that our most valuable resource, our personnel, are taken care of going forward. So I'm happy to present this, very proud of Jordan and his representation of our department. They did a very nice job.
Wellness is really important to all of us, kind of in the happy, healthy, wealthy mentality. Wellness is a top priority for us in the fact that we want to make sure that people are in a good place, both mentally, physically, emotionally. Our wellness initiative isn't new. There are pieces that have been here for quite some time. Our goal here, though, is to enhance all that and make it a comprehensive plan.
The police department does a great job of trying to promote health and wellness. We actually have two gyms at the police department. We have a brand-new kind of CrossFit gym downstairs where we've partnered with PRX, and our upstairs gym is a lot, a lot of weights, a lot of, there's treadmills, and it has that small, small gym feel. People are up here before their shifts, after their shifts, on their off days, getting their workouts in. For me, the physical wellness ties into my emotional wellness. When I come to the gym and workout, that's kind of my hour where I'm not on my cellphone. I kind of shut the outside world out, and I can decompress and get that workout in. And, you know, studies have shown that working out releases those endorphins that make you feel good, and it makes me feel better as a person. And, you know, when I go then into work, gets me in that right mindset, and I'm a genuinely happier person, which is going to benefit the community, benefit the other officers on my team, and is going to make me a more rounded and more solid police officer. I got the opportunity to go to Atlanta for the IACP Health and Wellness Conference. While I was in Atlanta for the conference, I had the opportunity to participate in a push-up challenge and ended up winning the contest. I did 65 push-ups against a variety of different people from across, across different departments and across the country. By being the winner of the push-up contest, I got an invite back for next year's conference in Anaheim in March for the wellness seminar out there, which is a fantastic opportunity. I mean, I'm really blessed to be able to represent the PD at these conferences. And I said one of my personal goals for this wellness program was in five years, I want to go back to the IACP conference and say, hey, this is what we did, this is what worked, this is what did not work, and this is what you guys can take away from us as a leader in the health and wellness community.
What I find really interesting is the large cross-section of people that are interested in wellness. Right now, we have 15 members of our wellness committee, and I think that speaks volumes to the fact that people want to be involved. To me, that's what's really exciting about the group, is that we've got a large number of people that are genuinely interested in helping others succeed inside of the police department. It's about bringing the information, bringing resources to our people, and that could be through that mental, emotional, physical, financial type of wellness, so that they're armed with good information, they're armed with good programming. And so we're now just bringing all those ideas into a room so that we can develop a format to make those things happen. And to me, that's really exciting.
Commissioner Gary, do you want to challenge him to push-ups? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
There's a move.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 4th, 2022 meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve Agenda Items 1 through 38?
There's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is all Items 1 through 38. Roll call vote, please.
Gary.
Yes.
Preston.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Yes. We have public speakers at this time. Brendan Krieger is up first.
Good morning, or good afternoon. I always pass that up, I'm sorry. Well, my name is Brendan Krieger. So a hot topic that has come up informs both at the city commission and at panel for candidates is affordable childcare. Childcare is a service that anyone and everyone may need at some point in their life if an individual wants to stay in the workforce. It is an essential service for residents who have kids. Often, cost has been seen as an issue, otherwise, or at other times manpower. Quality childcare is what's also needed. Affordability is a bonus, but I don't think we can sacrifice quality. As the city moves forward at the possibility at solving these issues, as a parent that utilizes childcare, I hear no one talking about the quality of childcare. The philosophy that childcare facilities preach and live by are some of the most important things parents look for when they are looking at daycare facilities for their kids. Whether it is a home daycare or a daycare location, every parent wants to know that their kids are in good care. Some parents also look at the daycares that match their parenting styles. The process can be rigorous, but also plays a significant identifier next to cost and availability. I am not saying that I have the solutions, but if the city takes the dive into the challenges of daycare for the city, please don't let the cost and availability be the only characteristics that are focused on. Thank you.
Page six.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney and the commissioners. I wanted to address what happened at the last meeting, what I witnessed as a community as well. With the city commission stated that the poor people should not have access to riverfront housing. This again shows the lack of trust, unfairness, and discrimination that the public expects those who sit in those five seats to have, to not have. It was very hard to sit silently as an activist, a business owner, a voter, a homeowner, a taxpayer, and also a person of color. I was disgusted by the response from one of the commissioners when Wes stood up to state the truth and was told to get out, and after, after we had to watch countless times of inappropriate and unprofessional behavior from some of the commissioners such as, I'm sorry, a commissioner becoming intoxicated, one who threw his middle finger up, those who use social media to bully and abuse their power, including bullying city employees, and those who insult other business leaders, and one who continually makes racial comments to the public. We know who you are, and if you sit in one of those five seats rather than representing yourself, continue to please represent the entire city. Thank you.
Christopher Cohen.
I'm Christopher Cohen, a Fargo resident. So on March 13th, I asked the Office of the North Dakota Attorney General to rule on one of my open records requests. There was a month-long delay in responding to a simple request. Less than three weeks later, on April 6th, I received a letter from the city, our new city attorney, Nancy, saying, quote, "The city of Fargo has determined that it is no longer able to respond to your repeated and numerous requests for information and comment pertaining to city actions due to the disruption to critical services and the consumption of valuable resources." Resources, by the way, such as creating videos, selling the city as being transparent. I remember sitting through one of those videos about a year ago here that the Director of Communications had made. In the letter, it was written that, "One, I put in 18 requests in the past six months." By the way, that's less than one per week, or about three per month, which apparently the Communications Department Director, Mr. Schilberger, has described as being overwhelming and unending. And I think that includes my request to the Fargo, the police department, so those aren't even all going to him. Okay. Two, the letter claimed that I had consumed valuable resources, even though I paid $25 per hour for each hour over the first hour, which is free, according to the law. Three, claimed I sent 107 emails to city staff, and staff responded 111 times, which Nancy Uclan represented in, quote, "extraordinary measures to respond." This is spread out over six months, 107 emails, while failing to mention that many of those were single-word or even a few-word responses between me and Mr. Schilberger, like, yes. Take the most recent emails, not the oldest ones, things like that. In other words, it's clear to me that the decision to not respond to my emails is likely of a retaliatory nature. That's the way I take it, due to the timing. Furthermore, there's also no explanation as to why all open records requests have been bottlenecked through the Director of Communications. If he's that overwhelmed, why is everything bottlenecked through him? Thank you.
Item 40, Public Input Opportunity. We have a Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Programs, 2022 HUD Action Plan, Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing and Proposed Amendments to the 2021 HUD Action Program. Tia Braseth to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Tia Braseth with the Planning Department. As you know, I'm here to introduce Item 40A for the public hearing on the HUD Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs. So tonight's public hearing items include a proposed amendment to the 2021 HUD Action Plan, the 2022 Draft Action Plan, and the Draft Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Report. Just a reminder that no action is needed this evening. This is just a public hearing. These items will be on the consent agenda at the May 2nd City Commission meeting, at which time we'll be seeking your final consideration and action. So just to go through these three main items here, the first item for this public hearing is a proposed amendment to the 2021 HUD Action Plan, which would be canceling the new construction activity of the Downtown Engagement Center for Homeless Services. Instead, a portion of the funds would be reallocated for existing operations at the current Downtown Engagement Center, which is located in the former police building. They currently offer wraparound services such as housing navigation, onsite showers and laundry facility, homeless health services, and other supportive services. You may recall that they functioned as our quarantine and isolation for our homeless population during the pandemic and are still available for those services as they arise. The second item for this public hearing is the 2022 HUD Action Plan Draft, which is available to view on the city's website. Approximately 1.8 million is being proposed for projects and about 200,000 for admin, fair housing items, and some minor contingency. So we'll go through these items, these five items, pretty quickly. The first activity being proposed is the Madison Bike Trails and Sidewalk Project, which is a collaboration between the Planning and Engineering Departments. This project will improve neighborhood connectivity and accessibility in the Madison neighborhood just west of the Madison Elementary School. And if you have any engineering-related questions, Brenda is available this evening to answer those. The second activity just shows the operations of the Downtown Engagement Center, which was what I was just talking about. It is operated by Fargo-Cast Public Health and the Gladys Ray Harm Reduction Staff. The third activity is for a core neighborhood housing development project. This is kind of in a relationship to our core neighborhood plan that was recently implemented or is going to be implemented, was recently completed. The exact location of this project is unknown at this time, but we do intend to do an infill homeownership project within one of Fargo's core neighborhoods. And then the fourth activity is for a Habitat for Humanity Build, which is typically a single-family homeownership project. And once the locations are known for these two projects, we'll do a public notice with a 30-day public comment period again, so people know where they're at and what is all involved in those projects. And then finally, the last activity under the 2022 HUD Action Plan is for the multifamily senior rental housing project that will be developed at the former Kmart site. There will be 88 units between two buildings, one for people who are 62 years or older and the other for 55 and up. And if you have any development-related questions, Dan Mader from Beyond Shelter is also here this evening. And finally, the last public hearing item is the city's Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Report. We update this report along with each five-year plan, and it helps us set goals within our community development plans. This report is available online for the public's review, and this is also part of the 30-day public comment period that ends on April 29th. And just as I was saying on the previous slide, that the schedule for this public comment period is through April 29th. Final consideration and action will be on the consent agenda for the May 2nd Fargo City Commission meeting, and once approved and once HUD announces the awards, because we don't know exactly how much money we're going to get yet, we just kind of estimate that in our plans for now, we will be able to submit the plan for HUD approval. And then we anticipate funding to be available this summer with 2022 projects starting late summer to early fall. And just a reminder that our program year for these programs is different than our regular fiscal year. Our program year doesn't even start until May 1st, and it will end April 30th, 2023. And then finally, if you have any comments or questions, this is how you can get ahold of us. Again, everything is available on the city website if you want more information, or you can simply contact us. With that, I guess I'll ask if there are any questions or if you want to open the public hearing. Again, no action is required this evening. It's just a public hearing. Thank you.
So anyone president wishes to speak to this plan? Anybody wishing to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Tia, I was just talking to you earlier today. The city of Fargo has actually committed a lot of money to low-income housing, has it not?
Correct.
And then these partners help us fulfill those? We get into senior housing, but also get into low-income housing?
Yep. It's all a part of our five-year consolidated plan that is approved by the city every five years.
And then you've made a change as far as your role, or city's role in planning, is that we've made a further commitment to housing, right?
Yeah. Our major focus is housing and homelessness, and that might be a little bit of a diversion from what we've done in the past.
And then the other good news is that we might get more than that money if Congress gives more money into that fund and may be able to do more projects. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Question?
Tia, could you go back two slides at Fair Housing Draft? Where would one locate that?
If you want to contact me, I can send you the direct link, so if anybody is interested in that. Otherwise, you could probably go to the search bar on our website and just type in Analysis of Impediments, and it should pop up a link.
Anybody else? So you need no vote tonight?
Nope, I do not need a vote.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Now, Item B, Application Filed by CoSchedule LLC for Payment in Lieu of Tax Exemption for Project to Be Located at 502 First Avenue North, which applicant will use in operation of a software company. Jim Gilmer to explain.
Thank you. This is a request for a five-year property tax exemption from CoSchedule. CoSchedule has been located in downtown Fargo since 2015. They've, well, they're based in Bismarck. Most of their growth has been in Fargo. They now have 35 people working in downtown Fargo. They're a primary sector company. They have customers all over the country. Most of their business is not in North Dakota, although the city of Fargo is one of their customers that uses the software for marketing communications. The five-year property tax exemption would be for this building. It's located on the corner of Fifth Street and First Avenue North. It's kind of a white stucco building. You probably have driven by it. It's a, the building itself is 120 years old. They would be acquiring a building and relocating their offices from downtown Fargo and continuing to add people. The property tax exemption would be only on the space in the building they occupy. They have another tenant in the building, a small tenant, as well as the replay games business that operates out of the basement. They're estimating that they'll be adding 17 new jobs over the next five years. About half of these jobs pay between $28 and $35 an hour, and the other half pay more than $35 an hour. The property tax exemption will save them approximately $25,000 a year in property tax. The Economic Development Center's Review Committee has reviewed the project and is recommending approval. We went through the scoring system. The minimum score required for approval is 120, and this score is quite high at 188. What I'd like to do now is have John Mahatchek from the Greater Fargo-Moore DDC talk about this company. He's worked with them for a number of years. And then also attending virtually, Justin Walsh, one of the co-founders of CoSchedule. But we'll have John go first.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I'm happy to see the progress on this project. I met with them probably two, three months ago as their lease was coming up and kind of went through the available programs, are available for expanding primary sector companies as they help kind of this, help their, aid their decision-making and where to make investments of their capital. From there, obviously connected them to Jim. He's been a great help for the process here with the city. We're also looking at helping them for a bank in North Dakota Flex Pay loan on the financing as well through the EDC. First met CoSchedule even before they were technically a company. It was, they were a marketing company today, made Garrett and Justin visit here in Fargo, just kind of asking, you know, what does it look like to kind of add talent here in the Fargo location? And started with two to three employees working in the coworking space downtown, then they moved to, I believe, the Meadowlark Building, and as they continue to grow again more, they're in where they're at now. Obviously, great to see primary sector companies expanding, and then also here in the downtown. Good jobs with this, as Jim mentioned. It's improving that property, breathing life into that visible spot in that corner. But also, you know, there's, I think this visibility will be a good aspiration for other startups to see this activity going on here in the downtown. It, I know they hope to kind of utilize some of that excess space to, first, maybe some other startups that might need some temporary location there as they're growing. This is a company, you know, I admire the company, I admire the co-founders. They're great corporate citizens. They really encourage their employees to get engaged into the community. They've mentored a lot of other entrepreneurs on what they've gone through. So I guess, big picture, I mean, I'm just excited for this, and I can't say enough good things about it, and I'll, I guess I'll let Justin take it from there.
Well, Justin, tell us a little bit more about the company and their expansion plans.
Very good. Thank you, Jim and John. My name's Justin Walsh. I'm the co-founder of CoSchedule. We've been in Fargo, like Jim said, since 2015, 2014, with folks at the coworking space. Moved into a new office after that, and several offices since, as we've grown. Fargo is our larger footprint out of our two offices in Bismarck and Fargo. It has got about two to one in terms of people versus our Bismarck office where Garrett and I are. In terms of the company, we enjoy very greatly doing business in the state of North Dakota, not just from a talent standpoint, but from a business standpoint. North Dakota continues to be an excellent place to do business for us, and so when it came time to really looking at what's happened with, you know, work and offices and remote work and how things have been changing, for us, it continues to just make a lot of sense to invest locally, invest here in our hometowns that we live in, give our team a creative, fun, inspiring place to work. And so we see this building as a, as a next step for us to be able to rehabilitate it. It needs, you know, a fair amount of updating on the exterior to bring it sort of up to 2022, and the, you know, the roof on there is totaled. It's long past its life expectancy, so we plan a complete redo of the entire roof system. So putting a fair amount of capital into the building, expecting it to last us for many years to come. The nice thing is that we won't fill the entire building. We'll fill a good percentage of the above-ground square footage, so we'll have room for expansion. Or like John mentioned, if there are other small, kind of up-and-coming, small businesses that need a temporary place, six-month, one-year long terms, we're, we're, I think, going to be perfect for that kind of a tenant for somebody that's maybe in that spot we were a few years ago, where they were transitioning from smaller spaces, smaller teams to larger teams. So we just continue to be excited to stay down downtown in Fargo. It's a huge part of our culture, a part of our team, part of the fabric of CoSchedule is definitely the downtown environment that Fargo provides. So here today, asking for this to help offset many of those investments we want to make on the building. This incentive helps us go a lot further on the exterior. It helps us cover that roof, redo it that it desperately needs, and so, you know, grateful that opportunities like this exist for us to go at a building and really do it right.
Very good. Jenny in the public that wants to address this application? And one president wishes to speak to it? If not, no. We'll close the public hearing. Any commissioner questions, or Mr. Preston?
Justin, if you could answer this one, or maybe Jim even. At what point in the process here do you, you don't own the building now. The application came in originally as owned, but was switched to leased, I believe. At what point in the process do you plan on purchasing the building?
Very good. We are in legal review, so we're in the due diligence phase of purchasing the building. We expect to close with the banking and financing partners sometime in May. Maybe towards the end of May would be a good target range for us to see a close on the building. Maybe towards the end of May would be a good target range for us to see a close on the building.
Maybe, Justin, you could explain that you have an LLC that's buying the building and then leasing to the Co-Schedule company to cover that.
Yep. So Garrett and I are the only two shareholders of Co-Schedule today. We are 100% owners and we are also 100% owners of the holding company. That would be on the, the actual title of the building. So in terms of that, ownership is the same. We're setting that structure up just based on the advice of CPAs and lawyers who tell us to do so. And it, I think it makes good sense in terms of liabilities and things that are inherited with the building. So it's just a holding company, but Co-Schedule would be our primary anchor tenant, ourselves essentially. Once we take ownership of the building, we would immediately begin the interior rehabilitation. We need additional bathrooms for our team, some small fit-up, a new break room. So those would be some of the first things we would start doing on day one. And then lining up our exterior contractors. The thing about exterior is those materials are quite backlog. So as soon as we, the day we close is the day we should send some deposits to those contractors to start getting materials on a ship and brought to Fargo because some of those roofing materials are quite, quite behind. And we'd probably be looking at the roof redo in the fall at, at the soonest. But yeah, so that is, is sort of the plan of possession right now. Our team would likely start occupying it in June.
Mr. Preston?
So Jim, maybe you can answer this one. Is it usual to do a tax exemption to someone who's leasing a building? I don't know that I've seen that before.
It's, it's actually quite common that, that the ownership of a building is set up in one LLC and then leases to the operating company.
But this is actually for Co-Schedule, which is the actual company that's going to be leasing it, right?
Yes, but it's quite common to do that just because sometimes the ownership of the building is financed one way and sometimes there's slightly different ownership. You know, the company, again, it's accountants, some lawyers would provide that advice. But it's quite common to see a holding company owning the building and leasing to a business that's operating within the building. You know, in, in this case too, they have two other tenants that will be leasing from the, the holding company that's owning the building.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, part of the reason for this line of questioning is, once again, I have to declare a conflict of interest because the current owner is the downtown fund. So I would leave it up to this group as to whether I should be participating or not.
Any objection to Mr. Preston voting? There's no, no objections. You may vote. Any other discussion? Commissioner Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, I'm just curious. This is the Exchange Building, is that?
It's correct.
What's the history of that building's receiving and qualifying or applying for incentives and tax breaks?
The, the building had received a Renaissance Zone exemption quite early in Renaissance Zone program, probably, I'm guessing, 2000, 2001. There was some renovation of the building at the time. At that time, it had been owned by the Vogel Law Firm and there was sort of a three-way Renaissance Zone approval. This building, the new Vogel Law Firm, and another building. I forget all the details, but all three were tied together and sort of one didn't work without the other. So it wasn't a major rehab of this, but it was sufficient to qualify for the Renaissance Zone. Because they have qualified once for the Renaissance Zone, they cannot do it again, even though it may, it may qualify. The state program is, once you use it on the program, you're done. Sort of one and done with the Renaissance Zone program.
Mr. Stern?
Just to continue, Jim, on page three in the application, there's references to the number of new positions. That, as I see it, is year number one. It's indicating two positions. But you mentioned a different number for how many new jobs would be created. Help me understand the, the number of jobs that will be created and the commitments that are made to deliver those new jobs relative to this application.
The commitment is that there's 48 employed now. We have them sign an incentive agreement for, I believe, the first three years. That's just the way it's set up. But you can see what they project within the first three years, they would be up to 56, so there would be eight jobs. But they estimate that there'd be another nine jobs beyond that. So often what we see is companies sort of under-promise and over-deliver because they're, they're tied to a certain number for that early year. So I don't know, Justin, do you want to provide any other comments on that, on what your projected job growth will be?
Yeah, I can't say that I was that clever, Jim, and under-promised. I think that's exactly what we expect. When I, when we look at course and speed for our growth and, you know, where we are as a company, we're, we're turning the corner as a company past sort of the, the fundraising stages and are profitable. And, you know, looking to continue to double down on that growth and, and a team is going to be necessary and growth is going to be necessary to do that. So those are numbers that we expect to, to see out, not unrealistic for us at all. The chance of exceeding them, quite high, but I would say for where we are and what we can see coming, that, that's a reasonable expectation.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Preston?
So Jim, the monitoring for the compliance for the jobs, how does that work?
Okay, well, we're, we're going to be working with the Greater Fargo Moray EDC and get annual reports on job creation. So we've got software set up to monitor that. The EDC often visits these primary sector companies fairly regularly and so that'll continue to be part of the, the process. With our new policy, then if someone doesn't meet the requirements, we report that to you. It would be up to the city commission then to either extend it and give people more time or pull back on the incentives that have been granted.
So all that's in place?
Yes.
Okay.
And Jim, just for the public, can you explain what the 188 points is versus what is our usual benchmark for when we give a pilot?
Yeah, the usual minimum benchmark is, is 120. They have 188. I think it might've been a little bit higher. We don't have, we didn't build that safety component into the, the question yet. But, you know, software companies don't typically have a lot of workers' comp claims.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Gary?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Presentation by Gate City Bank regarding Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Program. Nicole Crotchfield to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're excited to announce this year. We've opened the application process for the NRI Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative by Gate City Bank. And the members of their team are coming forward here. As a reminder for the public, this is a targeted program for renovation or rehab of single-family homes, homeowner-occupied, single-family homes. The geography this year is a little bit broader than just the core neighborhoods. It goes up to, all the way to the north side and down to 32nd Avenue to the south. Eligible projects are either a 10-year or 15-year loan process. Basically, they can apply to the city of Fargo and then we coordinate with them and coordinate with the Gate City Bank team. And so I'm here to answer any questions if you may have, and Gate City Bank might have a couple of comments they want to make.
Yes, thank you for having us. I have Pam Krupke, who has been leading the program since 2005. I think everyone's pretty familiar with her. I've got Christina Clark, who helps Pam with a lot of her lending here at Gate City Bank. She's our senior personal banker. And I've got LaZan to hear, who is our senior customer service and sales supervisor. But thank you for having us. At Gate City Bank, we're committed to creating a better way of life for our customers and communities we serve. The Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative is a series of programs designed to assist local homeowners, encouraging the preservation of older homes and beautiful neighborhoods in the heart of our communities. In addition, this initiative helps the city maintain affordable housing and adds long-term property value for local homeowners. Since 2005, Gate City Bank has been proud to support and invest in this program in communities across North Dakota and central Minnesota. We're truly thankful for this opportunity to help create a better way of life for our friends and neighbors residing in the city of Fargo. And we've got a nice check for you guys today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have 15 homes in our neighborhoods that need help. Approximately about 35,000 and each house could be helpful to this. The interest rate is 2.59. I don't think you can beat that on the market right now. That's what I looked it up on your website. So I think this is something we'd love people to participate in. And what Gate City committed to, if you go through the first 2 million, they'll find some more, so please use it.
No, it's not mine. I did not want to.
We'll put that in your checkbook.
Oh, sounds good.
I didn't want to get in any trouble even.
Item 42, Recommendation Right-of-Use Agreement with Bell Bank and Olaf Anderson Construction Incorporated on 520 Main Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Kevin Gortle with the Department of Engineering. Going to try to walk through this fairly quickly, but maybe take an opportunity just to kind of show you some of the things that we try to do on projects like this. On the screen here, you can see a picture I took this morning my way to work. Demolition has started. Progress is being made. And we're trying to figure out how to partner with these guys and work in the right of way. So why are we entering into an agreement? And I guess that's probably the, the question that sometimes is the hardest answer. But I, we're trying to identify and protect the existing city infrastructure that goes around that site. And I'll show you another slide coming up here. We also want to try to balance the development's desire to close roads and to close sidewalks and to build their project, balancing that with the impacts to the public and the users and the adjacent properties. And then we do try to do a little bit of coordinating traffic impacts between projects, both city and private. So if we have a city project in the area or we know of another development that's coming, we could coordinate between the two of them to always maintain some pedestrian activity or things like that. And then maintaining consistency among all of these things that happen. And primarily in our downtown is where it's really happening a lot. So here's a picture of the site. It's an aerial picture and this is from our GIS system. And you can see on the right-of-way side of this project, all the things are in the area. We've got traffic signals. We've got streetlights. We've got underground wiring for the streetlights. We have sanitary sewer. We have water mains. We have storm sewer mains. And that's just the stuff we have in the ground. There are private utilities there in the ground as well. So we're trying to do all this coordination and trying to work with these guys to protect this, all the stuff that's in the ground, but still be able to accommodate their construction as we go along. So I'm going to zoom in here a little tighter and probably the primary concern in this location is the sanitary sewer. And so you can see kind of in that black circular area there, that is a sanitary sewer that is running about seven feet off the property line. At the top of that black bar, they need to dig down about 15 feet to get to the bottom of their footings for the bottom of excavation. So how do we protect that sanitary sewer that's there? It's also an old clay line and you can see off to the right side, a picture from a video inspection of that clay sewer line. It's not in the best of shape. So we've worked with, with Olaf Anderson and Bell Bank and they have agreed to, from manhole to manhole, replace that clay sewer line with a PVC line, probably a little more sturdy. It's new and we can move that along. In the red circle on the bottom, that's the same clay sewer, but it's only about five feet to the top of pipe. So you start bringing in a lot of construction activity. You start driving loaders and man lifts and trucks and all that stuff over there. If you get too deep in there, you could crush that pipe. So they work with the contractor. They're going to try to keep a hard surface over the top of that to protect that pipe during their construction. So these are the things that we're doing to try to work with these guys as we try to accommodate their construction and the use of the right of way. So both excavation covers things like that, so we don't have any problems. That sanitary sewer covers the area from along Main Avenue from Broadway to Ted Street. So all that sewage comes down that, that pipe, so we want to make sure that we don't have any issues with it. So what is the proposed work in the right of way? Here I drew a squiggly little red line around all the things they're talking about removing. Sidewalk, curb and gutter, part of the parking, part of the, the bulb on at First and Broadway to get into the area that they need to get into to excavate and dig into the, to the project that they have going on. So quite extensive work in our right of way. This is probably one of the bigger ones we've seen as far as impacts to the right of way. Just kind of rolling along. We've kind of agreed on a lot of things and Lynn Narum and Jared Swanson from Olaf Anderson are here tonight too, as if they want to present more on this here. We get to the last item, kind of where we're trying to figure out what's the best option. And there's a lot of pre-cast items that come in for a building like this and this is kind of the proposed truck route. You can see this truck coming in from the left side of the screen, stopping and then backing into that construction area and then unloading cranes, set up, set the pieces where they need to be and then departing. So from a consistency standpoint, engineering has always said, when you're setting back in the construction zone and you can get that truck out of the area, we want to leave the, the road open. Leave First Avenue open. Use flaggers to get the trucks in there safely. So stop them at Broadway, stop them by the parking garage, let the truck get in there and then reopen the roadway to keep traffic flowing. And then as you work your way out, there's no more room, right? You've kind of set yourself right to the property line. So then we close it for a month or some timeframe to allow them to finish setting the pre-cast. But instead of maybe a two-month closure, we can limit that to a one-month closure. First Avenue South carries about 2,700 vehicles a day, so it's one of our busier, busier east-west routes in downtown. So as you see in your packet, we kind of have two suggestive motions and we'll ask you guys, what do you guys feel is the best choice? Again, Lynn and Jared are here from Olaf Anderson, if you'd like to have any comments from, from the contractor's perspective. But staff recommended motion is motion number one.
And Kevin, just to be clear, we've done this on other projects downtown. We've done Block 9. We've done Merchantile, same way?
Yep, Kessler, 1001 Landing. I think the list is very long and they're not always in downtown, but they seem to be focused in downtown.
Contractor want to speak?
Lynn Narum with Olaf Anderson Construction. For the most part, yeah, Kevin and I have worked really closely on this along with Jared. I think we agree on most everything except for the closure of First Avenue. Is our concern from a public safety standpoint, with the amount of trucks that we have coming in through that timeframe, we anticipate 10 to 12 trucks per day. That's one per hour, just coming into the site, along with then leaving the site also. So is our feeling, recommendation that we would push the traffic around, maybe on 7th or something like that, to just not get the public involved. We're not affecting, directly affecting businesses. I know we are indirectly affecting them for sure. We will need parking spots shut down in those areas during that timeframe in order for the trucks to turn into the lot. So it's just another obstacle that is concerning for both us and the public. But I think that's the one, the one hiccup we have here. Otherwise, I think we're sitting pretty good.
Any question of the commissioners? Commissioner Preston?
So what street closure are you talking here?
So it'd be First Avenue South from Broadway to Fourth Street.
Well, not quite to Fourth.
Broadway to Fourth Street?
Yeah.
It'd be to just the east side of Island Park ramp.
So include the Y M?
It'd be short of the Y entrance.
Yeah, so access to the Y would be able to, you could come down from Fourth Street and get into the Y. But if you were on Fourth Street, you have to go down to, is it Sixth, then come around Island Park, come all the way around. If you're southbound, northbound, we take you up to Main Avenue.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
Well, just a couple of things. First of all, it's Main Avenue is a block over too. So it's like Main Avenue can handle a lot of this traffic. And there aren't a lot of other small businesses in that vicinity. It's mostly, it's Island Park and then the Y. That's other than that. And so, but I do like the concept of leaving the roads open as much as possible and using, instead of shutting it down, having people temporarily move it, you know, when the trucks are backing in. Would that help your situation?
Well, and you know, the timeframe of two months or eight weeks that we're putting on this is an estimated timeframe of, you know, in case there's a week or so of weather also. I mean, our, with all the right-of-way closures that we have going on with this project, it's our anticipation to try to get those back open as quickly as we can. And we feel like this is the best way to do that. We also have a shutdown needed with this timeframe of the, of the storm line going across the street, which we'll shut down, you know, for a few days to a week regardless on that road also. We're trying to incorporate that at the same time.
Mr. Tom, Gary?
I say we give them the two months and if they get done early, then they get done early. Because otherwise you're just going to come back for more time if you're not able to get it done. So I'll move the contractor recommended motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have some comments or questions. So Kevin, tell me, tell me your objections to that and why you didn't go along with that at the beginning. Is it what you summarized that you think they, the other, your suggested motion? Is it what you summarized that you think the other, your suggested motion?
You know, I guess just as we've watched these other buildings come up, that's the typical process we see, is when they're setting it in their site and they walk their way out. And that's just, that's what other observations we've made, so. But I mean, like I said, either option works. I mean, we can go with either option. It's just the, you know, the impacts to the public and the things that we're trying to minimize and mitigate. But either option works for us.
But Kevin, don't a lot of people drop off YMCA, that route? Isn't that where you drop off your children on the daily program, Monday through Friday?
I would think there's a lot of traffic that comes out of there. I mean, First Avenue South is one of the busier routes. I mean, it's probably busier, I think it's busier than NP, maybe not busier than First Avenue North, but it's, you know, it's one of the busier east-west routes in our downtown. It's not as busy as Main Avenue, obviously.
Commissioner Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, at what point is, as this proceeds, if we went with the staff recommendation of one month, at what point would they know they needed additional time? And couldn't we revisit it then?
Yeah, so, you know, we all have been around construction and schedules. You think you have a great schedule, and like Lynn said, you get rain, you get all these delivery problems and things like that. We work with them, and we try not to bring it all to you guys. But if they have an issue where they need an extra week, we just say, nope, that's fine. Take your week and do it safely, get it done. You know, we're not trying to be really hard on everybody, but if they don't need to close it, we like to try to get it open. That's really our philosophy. But there's safety. I know Lynn brought some things up about opening up a few parking spots on the, just south of Main because of safety reasons, and we said, no, that's a good point. So we let them keep them closed just for safety. So we try to be flexible. It's just we're trying to be consistent in how we manage all of these projects in our right-of-way.
Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the, or move the staff recommended motion number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 43, Resolution to Authorize the Issuance of an Annual Appropriation Bond Series 2022-D Approving Certain Actions and Approving Forms, Documents Required in Connection Therein. Steve Sprague to explain.
That's a little unusual, isn't it? So this is one of the final things that Kent was working on before he left. And this is a bond, we're trying to get out and save the city money on the interest rate. This is to allow us to build a fire station number eight, and fully equipment with a truck and with the equipment that has to go on the truck. And Kent worked on this, and rather than go with the typical bond issue where we'd be out, you know, 60 days or something like that, and then see the interest rates rise, he wanted to do this negotiated sale. Originally, he was thinking we were going to be around 3.25, and it actually came in at 3.04. And so I'm very pleased with that, and we feel it's a good investment at this time to get that out of the way. Last week, we received architecture bids for this fire station, and so we are moving forward. This will give us enough money to get this completed.
Do you may have Commissioner Garrick able to vote on that?
Yeah, it's very important. We've been working on this for, I think, as long as I've been a Commissioner. So to get that money at that interest rate, and the way that South Fargo is growing, if you live in South Fargo, you want and need this station.
Did you want to make the motion?
Yes, some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 44, Recommendation to Concur with Finances Staff and the Liquor Control Board and Apply Penalty Matrix $500 Fine First Value to Longhorn Steakhouse. Steve Sprague to explain as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to give just a little bit of background on these compliance failures. In the old days, we'll call it, with the staff liquor board, the way that we interpreted the ordinance or the way that we looked at the ordinance was, if the servers had had their training and the staff or the managers had had training, and they failed a compliance check, then we kind of gave them, you know, the option, or we excused the penalty. With the new liquor board, a new police chief, and we've had a kind of a change in philosophy, I guess, and the part of the ordinance that, it really comes down to one word, and the word in there is "may." And it says that the, if the manager and the staff have both had the server training, the first offense, the penalty may be waived. And the new liquor board is of the feeling that these penalties should not be waived. And so with that, we're coming forward with a recommendation of applying the $500 penalty. We did hear from Darden Group, who own or have the Longhorn Steakhouse. They also have Red Lobster and Olive Garden. And it seems to me, I remember that one of those, Red Lobster or Olive Garden, failed a few years back. And so using that old philosophy of, everybody's been server trained, we'll give you a, you know, get out of jail free card kind of thing. And so they were surprised to see that this was being recommended for the penalty because they had had the server training. So, and I think that they were going to have a representative here tonight. I'm not sure who the person was, though.
Looks like we have a representative.
Hello, how you guys doing tonight? So we have a few points we want to talk about. The restaurant has been open since 2012, and to our knowledge, this is our first offense. As far as our policies and stuff, we take it very seriously. We have been compliant with everything. We actually let the server go when he failed his test, or failed making sure that he was compliant. We're making sure all servers are checking all the IDs. We also immediately contacted our corporate office to notify and address the situation, and we're taking all the necessary steps, including with working with our licensing department, which is Darden, to make sure that we are compliant. Like Steve talked about, the violation scheduled, it states that a first offense may be waived if the employee who failed, the sting, and all managers have been certified. Everybody in the restaurant is certified, they went back and checked everything. And everybody that was in the restaurant at that time is certified as going through their server training. All the employees trained, including managers, who sold the alcohol. That's all I have, thank you.
Any Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Preston?
So I would certainly support moving forward with the penalty, just because, I'm just looking at the four that were actually, the penalty was issued. And I know when I looked at the video, at least one of them was at the Liquor Control Board meeting, and, you know, I think probably met the criteria for a waiver, was not given a waiver. So what concerns me with all of this is that there's inconsistency in the process. And I would argue that we should be not waiving unless, well, should not be waiving, period.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask the Liquor Control Board to, after our actions tonight, to revisit this policy and recommend to us a modification of that policy or not. I concur with Commissioner Preston, it should be, shall be waived. But I'd like to hear their recommendations.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we concur with the staff recommendation and issue the penalty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Recommendation of Liquor License Compliance Violation to Crave. Steve Sprague to explain.
And this one's slightly different. The general manager did appear at the liquor board and explained that he had, was newly appointed as general manager, had just completed two months of training down in Minneapolis, and was, it was his first day on the job. And he felt that the server who had been trained, and the managers had all been trained, he just felt that the server was nervous because of his presence. Paraphrasing, I guess. So the liquor board at that meeting, we only had four members there. There was a motion to apply the penalty, seconded, and it ended up in a 2-2 vote. And then we had made a motion to waive the penalty, was seconded, and it ended up in a 2-2 vote. So we ended up kind of with a hung jury, and so it needed to come to the City Commission to have a final decision. And I believe the manager from Crave was going to be here also.
Is the manager from Crave here?
He's not. I don't know if you have any more questions about that, but basically, that was his, Commissioner Pepcorn, wouldn't you say that that was what his story was? That the server was just nervous because of the presence of the general manager?
Any discussion? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the option one to apply the penalty in matrix.
Commissioner Stern?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 46, Came Upon Us This Week That Bruce Gubb Has Tended His Retirement on June 24, 2022. And with that happening, we'd appoint an interim administrator, which I would say Mike Ruddinger would fill that slot. And then my presumption would be the new commission, once it's formed, can have a discussion about the position of city administrator, change it, do different things they may like. And then we'd advertise nationally for an administrator. First of all, I think as a commission, we ought to thank Bruce Gubb for the tremendous work he's done for the city of Fargo, and it asks for a round of applause. Some people say he doesn't have a face for TV, but he really looked nice in that clip, I think, Bruce. You did a good job. Any questions on the recommended motion? Can I have a motion?
Yes, a move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
It's going too fast. Recommendation for Application of Property Tax Exempt for Improvements Made to Buildings. Do I have a motion?
Yes, a move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Preston? Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Mr. Stern, I think we're done with the meeting, unless you want to talk about a party on Patriots Day. There is an event going on at the Fargo Theater tonight, and discussion of Patriots Day. So if people want to go to that, that could be, no birthdays, nothing happening?
Just Ben Dow may second, but I hope they're not removing snow and all that, if you get my drift.
Very good job, because Ben's been happier than heck. That storm somehow missed the eastern part of the state. He had guys in overtime if that was coming. Is there a motion to Jared?